Good evening. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Hamlet City Council. We're glad to see everyone here. At this time, a meeting is called to order. And our first item of business will be Pastor Allison Farah of First Baptist Church will offer our invocation tonight.
May we pray. Our Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for the many blessings that you give to us day by day. We thank you that we live in a land that is free and that you give us the privilege to have the opportunities that we do. We thank you for the city of Hamlet, for the blessings that you have bestowed upon its citizens. And we thank you for the opportunity for those who watch over us, to govern us and protect us. We ask that your blessings would be upon each one. And these that are before you tonight, making decisions on behalf of this community, we ask that you give them wisdom, that you give them guidance and integrity. Bless them in all that they do. And may we, as a community, honor you by our words, our deeds, and our actions. And we ask this prayer in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, you have before you at this time the agenda for tonight's meeting. What are your wishes on it?
I second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Counsel, you have at this time before you consent agenda which includes items. A, approval of minutes for September the thirteenth, regular meeting and closed session. Approval of tax releases, budget amendments for October of 2022. What are your wishes on that?
I make a motion that we accept.
Got a motion, got a second. Any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed likewise. Thank you. At this time, we move along to item involving comments from attendees. If you're here tonight and you wish to make any comments on anything, we'd certainly like for you to come up and we'll hear you.
Ms. Linda, would you like to address the council and the thing? Now, that's what this time's for.
Thank you so much.
Please come up to the-
Please come to the microphone.
Microphone.
I want to greet everyone that is here. My name is Linda Ross, and I'm running for county commissioner. And I just wanted to come out this afternoon and just, so that you get a chance to talk with me after the meeting or if you have any questions. I grew up in Hamlet. This is my town, amen? And I'm just so grateful pastor here for twenty-three years in this area. And I am looking forward to serving Richmond County. I'm looking forward to it. We've been out all day long today, talking with people and just getting to know the community, allowing the people to get to know me in the community. So, that's why I'm here today, so I get a chance to talk with the mayor and you. And I want you to talk to me, ask me some questions, find out what I'm all about, okay? So, after the meeting, just take, you know, take a few minutes if you like and just come by. I'll be sitting at the door and you can talk to me. Is that okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Is there anyone else that has something tonight they'd like to speak on? Yes, sir. Please come up to the microphone, state your name.
Yes, sir. My name's Donald, excuse me, Donald Drake. We've been here about two, two and a half years now. We live at the end of Stubbs Street here in Hamlet, the end of the lake. And it seems like every few months, we have come up and addressed a problem we're having with wild dogs and feral cats running through our property. We're right at the end of the street, close to the trees. We've had deer killed right behind us. I'm afraid they're going to get to the children. The dogs are really getting bad. And so, we, it's my understanding, we only have one animal control officer. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's right.
I've talked to him. He seems to be pretty busy. But we'd like to know, you know, how we can address this problem, being we don't live in the country and can't handle it ourselves. There, we've just got too many kids in our neighborhood now. They're starting to get to age four, five, six years old, and they're starting to run around. One of these days, something bad's going to happen.
We have the police chief here tonight. Chief, would you like to make a comment on this? Don't mean to put you on the spot, but-
That's all right. Sir, how are you? Didn't this friend?
Oh, I hate it.
We've called probably three hundred dogs and about that many cats. This animal control officer started. We've had really great success. What he's dealing with unfortunately is a pure feral wild pack of dogs. They're over at CSX. They're coming in out of the city. He's correct. They killed a deer probably, what, six months ago?
Right in the church about a block from us.
Right in the church. We've eliminated most of that pack. So, maybe they crawled back. We've gotten down to two or three. So, what we're going to do is go out there, just if it's okay with you, I'll have the animal control officer come up, set traps up on your property.
That's great.
And we can start trapping. The issue we run into is the wild dogs. They smell any human on those traps. They won't go there, right? And they're eating healthy. They're not, they're not fended by any traps. So, what we're doing is we're trying to really get those trap type locations where they will go. I know we called, one of the dogs had puppies. We ended up, they were staying in a vacant house in Rock Street. We ended up catching, I think, seven puppies. We got six. That's the issue we run into now. Dogs are breeding and especially as we turn off the breeding season and having pups.
Yeah, we're seeing pups and we're seeing some that look like they're pit bull mix or bigger, more of the aggressive style dog. We don't see too many little ones. It's the larger ones, thirty, forty, fifty pounds and more, they're the ones that concern me.
Yeah, and he's correct. I haven't talked to the manager. The other issue we run into being part-time, our animal control officer can only work about, I don't know, a thousand hours a year. Well, he's at that, right? So, we're not getting the-
We're not getting the response that we had before, just because he can only work one day a week. So, I've spoken to the manager. We're coming up with some alternative ideas so that we can still meet the needs of our community because we've really gotten the animal issue under control. But with him having to cut hours is obviously creeping back up. So, we're going to go out there, set some traps up. Is it okay with you? We'll follow up tomorrow and then we'll go from there.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yes, sir.
That's where a lot of those dogs, wild dogs and feral cats come from. They come off the railroad yard.
Correct.
And they come up, and it's a breeding ground for them. And they come back on the old ice house area, move all the way up. I worked at a railroad, worked on the yard, and you'd see them and you'd have to be aware of. And they come, and they migrate down to the city or wherever they can find food to eat. And it's very, that's the problem where it's coming from in that area. And it's very, it's still evidently very bad.
Well, that, we may even talk to CSX.
That would be a start.
That's a, that's a good idea. I hadn't even thought about that.
Yeah, good luck with that. And they may, but they come back sometime. We'd put a, we'd put out animal traps for them, you know, to catch them up there. But it, that's been a problem for a long time up there. A breeding ground in the areas up there. And the biggest thing is that we have made pets out of them. You know, come up there, feed them and they hang around until it got ran over and cut into or something.
And then they're breeding. And also, they, they visit Hamlet for the vacant houses.
Yep, that is.
They live in the vacant houses.
But that's where that area is coming from. It isn't from within the city because I think that control officers pretty well got a, done a great job on catching them. But that's coming back and just, and from one, one pack litter to another litter.
Yep.
If you stop it up there, you'll get a big, big relief.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Drake, we appreciate you coming in tonight, and I hope you've got some kind of understanding and that they are looking at your issue.
Sure do.
Okay.
Now, I'm going to turn it over to my wife because she, we have a water problem. Come off of that last deal we came up with. I'm going to let her talk to you about that.
Oh, sure. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Drake, which house is that?
What's your house number, Mr. Drake? One thirty? Okay, all right. One thirty steps.
Chief, has there been any issues with those dogs around Mary Love? I'm just sitting here thinking that people are up there, had the cemetery visiting.
No, sir. No, we haven't had any at cemetery. Like I said, the first pack, we went out to the church. Aggressive. They were the ones I told you, they'd pinned the deer down and killed the deer. Well, they've killed about three deer now. And that's just wild dogs. We were able to thin those out to one or two dogs. But if you don't catch them all, the breeding starts and we have to start all over. And like I said, right now, we're at a point where we don't have, because of hour restrictions, an animal control person, but one day a week.
Now, is that because he can't work so much or is that?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And there are plenty of deer up in the Mars Creek area. A lot of them.
We got hours.
Yeah.
I'd start, I'd start with CSX.
We have the funds, we just don't have the hours. But we are, we're going to address it and follow up with it because he has done a great job. We've really, I used to see people walking around with sticks and bats and everything else. Now, you really don't see that anymore because the dogs had dwindled down. But you can definitely see that we've had to cut his hours. That stuff's starting to creep back up again.
We're pretty sure we're going, looking at different options because we definitely don't want to get back where we were at.
No.
Already bad enough like in his area, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Drake, did you have something you want to talk about?
Yes, I do. I understand that we're having water problems here at Hamlet. We got the, the notice that our water is condemned. We are getting black pieces, and they call it magnesium. I don't know for sure. I have a brand-new washer. My clothes come out just spotted brown. I have lost at least four brand-new blouses. My dog's drinking it. I'm brushing my teeth, and we're going to take showers. We're having to bottle water. But it's been said, don't worry about bottled water because it's not going to help. Now, they told us everything that is happening, but they never said what to do about it for us. No boiling, don't worry about the water, filters won't work. Now, this is a statement. What do you expect us to do? And it's like, it's getting worse. And they say, people that are older, that have problems, that it's worse for them. Well, I have every problem just about in sun. And it's like, I'm worried about this. I'm worried because my children, I have my grandchildren down here, and she took, took a drink of milk out of, out of a glass I had taken out of my dishwasher, and it stunk. I mean, stunk. And so, I now wash, I can't wash my clothes without getting them spotted. And I could bring, I could bring them and show them to you. They're just awful. I had to throw some away, had to go out and buy new underwear for my husband because the, the ones he had looked like he had diarrhea all over them and it wouldn't come out. I'm sorry, that's what it looked like. So, I'm very concerned about this because my problems are serious. And no one has offered to say what is going on. They told us, oh, we ought to have some results by October. They're cleaning this, they're cleaning that. There's algae all over Boyd Lake now. I thought they were supposed to be fixing that. Well, it isn't. Drove in the other day and it's, we're right up against Boyd Lake. And it's all the way from that VFW hall, all the way down to us. What are we supposed to do? Because this causes cancer, which was stated. My husband has cancer. What is he supposed to do? It's sure not going to help him. I would like some truthful answers about this water situation. Haven't heard a word, not one word. We had our water tested. The only thing they said is we have black, high magnesium in it. Everything else come out real good. So, we're trying to do our side of it. Our toilet bowls, they're black ringed. They look like you're very unsanitary people. They're black ringed, and I've talked to my, my neighbors, I've talked to the health department, and she's, the woman down there says I've got the same thing. She was totally surprised when she came home from vacation and she had a black toilet. You can't keep it off. We've tried bleach. We have tried all kinds of cleaners. You just can't keep it off. And I want to know what, if anything, is being done because in October, we were supposed to know some results because evidently they're washing the tanks. And I understand they have to do their side of it. I understand that. But they not keeping us told what we can and can't do. It's become very serious now. And it's like, filters on our, we put filters on our, our water things. Don't, don't even bother. It won't work, they say. Don't buy bottled water because it has the same thing. What do you do? What do you do? Don't boil it. Won't help. And this is in what they gave us. They knew about this like in May. We got the blasted bulletin or whatever they're going to call it, notice in June. It's like, no, it's July. It's the middle of July. We got it. Now, I want to know why we're not kept in the loop. And we're the ones out there having to, shall I say, die slowly because something is not right with this water situation. And if they say, oh, yeah, you get it from Boyd Lake, well, then clean it up or go somewhere else. There's got to be an answer, and somebody has to care for us. And nobody seems to be telling us anything, nothing. And I am tired of it. I've been to my doctor, and there's just nothing they can give me as a pill, shot, nothing for this. I am really, really angry about it. I'm very concerned. And it's like, we don't know what to turn because we did everything we were supposed to do and more. And they haven't, we haven't heard a word since July when they knew in May.
Well, as far, now, Ms. Drake, as far as the black stuff in the water, Mr. Brown, our water superintendent's here tonight, and we'll let him address this issue with you. But as far as the water, the water that you're getting from the plant is still good water. It's just that there's several thousands of a difference that was in, for the floor, for something else. But anyway, by the time we get all that information back and send a notice out, it's already cleared up. But it changes about twice a year. But as far as the other stuff in the water, I don't know what that could be.
Mayor, if I could speak to this briefly. I understand and appreciate all of your concerns. We've, Robert and I, our superintendent, public utilities director, is, we've spent a lot of time talking about this. And we will be available for you to talk about this as much as possible and answer all the questions. I have, I don't think we've ever spoke tonight. I do believe I've spoke with your husband before. But if you stick around, we're actually going to have a presentation on this matter.
Okay, okay. But I really would like to see somebody help us.
I can assure you that the city manager, superintendent, the mayor, and all the council are very concerned about the water for our citizens. And I've heard it from other people. But we do care, we do care about a fellow man. And everything that can be done is and will be done. Thank you for your concern.
But how will we know it's being done if somebody doesn't keep us in the circle?
We're available for you. We're actually, I don't want to steal Robert's thunder, but we have an announcement that we're going to make tonight at the end of our presentation that I think will help address some of your concerns. And if they do not, you can call me or Robert, and we'll meet with you anytime.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you all so much. Is there anyone else that's got anything tonight they want to speak on? Okay, if not, we'll close the comments. Next item of business, item number six, is a discussion of parking on Washington Avenue.
Yep. Mayor, I'll address this, and Chief Brown's here to address it as well. We've heard many concerns about Washington Avenue, various incidents from the public, from the neighbors, people here at this meeting. We're requesting, and the chief and I have talked about this, and again, we're available to answer questions. We're going to request city council prohibit parking on Washington Avenue from one seventy-seven to Seaboard Street, so that first block there, to hopefully give us another tool in the toolbox to address some of the concerns that were brought here before the council. So, again, it's a pretty simple request. We'd be happy to answer questions, but that's, that's what we're asking the city council.
Have you already got the ordinance written up?
We're going to, we're going to draft the ordinance after the fact, if that's okay with you. But if it's, if, we didn't want to go through doing that. We, actually, one other thing I want to talk to the attorney about is can we adopt an ordinance that, I think there's a smarter way to do it, instead of doing an ordinance for each street and each block, so that we don't have to actually codify individual streets that we're blocking or changing or things of that nature. But that's something I want to discuss with the attorney about after the meeting.
Okay, it'd be a little bit difficult to make a vote on what we don't know what we're voting on tonight.
Prohibiting parking on Washington Street from one seventy-seven to Seaboard.
That's not a clue to one other issue.
One block.
What about loitering? Parking and loitering. Because residents are, of the, of people over there, we've had numerous people come up and say about the lauderness going on over there and hanging out. Why don't we just add that to it?
Part of our problem.
Well, I don't, the, the ordinance, what we're asking of city council is specific regarding to parking, any other crimes would, or, or, or complaints that may or may not be crimes. We'll have to address those through the laws that are available to us, so. But what we're requesting, I don't, I don't think it would cover loitering specifically, but there are other ways to address that.
But we can, we can go ahead and vote on this parking ordinance.
Yep.
Okay, I need a motion. Got a motion?
Morris.
Either one, doesn't matter. Motion that we prohibit parking from one seventy-seven to Seaboard Street on Washington Avenue.
Do I have a second? Got a second? All in favor, say aye. Opposed likewise.
Where do we stand on the apartment and the, and the store? Because we can ban parking over there all we want. There's still a bunch of bad things going on in that area where the apartments are and there at the store.
Yes, yes, sir.
I mean, I come out there the other day, and there were, you know, probably thirty or forty folks out there in the street, leaving the street, going into the, we got to do something over it. We've been talking about it for a year and a half.
Yep.
And it's time to, and I know y'all are, y'all's hands are tied.
Yes.
You know, to an extent at the police department.
Has the new owner made any overtures about what he intends to do?
The new owner, are you, so, yeah, the, the new owner of the apartments is in contact with the police chief to make some improvements. They're looking at several changes to the site, and we've been in close contact with them on that regarding the store. We've also been in contact with them. There have been some minor improvements. You know, there was a big sunken area, and the police chief actually reached out personally and made contact with the property owner, and they filled that in. I think there were some plans to do some other improvements as well. We've also been coordinating with ALE on, on possible violations of their license to make sure that they understand that we're going to use every tool in the toolbox to make positive change in that, in that area where we've had so many issues.
Is that the same store, man, with the ABC, the email you sent?
Yep, correct.
It's just a shame that you've got to live in a neighborhood where you can't even go to sleep at night for the aggravation going on.
Chief, where does the new owner live?
I believe it's Tennessee, right?
Guarantee you it's not Hamlet.
Yeah, I don't have all the information in front of me. We are, as the manager said, we're taking a multifaceted approach to dealing with this. One is crime prevention through environmental design. That would be the no parking. We've spoken to the new owner about fencing. I passed that information, Ms. Gail passed on me today. The issue we run into, as I said before, is the folks gathering there. You have one resident there who's giving them permission. Once they, he is now going through the eviction process to remove everybody from those buildings because they're really not habitable the way they are. He's going to secure the area with fencing, wooden fencing that meets our code. Then anybody caught, then give the city power of attorney for trespassing. So, if anybody's caught, we can charge them with trespassing. He's also, the previous owner and the rental company have been sent nuisance abatement or dangerous building letters. And we've also gone to, we've sent one to the store because of their issues about folks congregating in the parking lot, overselling, and the hazardous of his parking lot. Like I said, a lot of that has dissipated, and the officers are going through and, when they're on patrol, having those folks clear out. And the new cameras, hopefully, we'll be able to throw this up in a meeting or two. You can see have also been part of the crime prevention to a design because that's reduced a lot of the activity there. So, we're trying many different avenues to address this problem because it's been one, it's been an issue for decades. And we're very happy with the results so far. I hope we'll have some good news later. We also have one on Monroe Street that we met with the ALE and the property owners today, and there's going to be some very good movement on that one to eliminate a house where we've had a lot of issues in the past. So, we're trying. It's just, we can't fix it overnight.
That's right.
Thank you for your help.
Chief, y'all are doing a fantastic job over there. The, from what we've seen over the last year or so, the department's made a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree change. And we appreciate the things that are going on on the streets and in our neighborhoods.
Well, thank you. I will say that this month, you know, our crime, we average about a hundred, about two-hundred reports a month, and we're down about fifty reports. We've had that for the last several months. So, we're seeing a decrease in some of the crime that we've been facing, which is a good thing. We also identified the suspect in the last shooting we had. There's warrants going to be out for them. And we're, the last homicide we had at Speedway, I got information today that the detective's going to meet with the district attorney about charges on that. So, they're making strides.
We'll have things settled down out in the Briarwood subdivision.
I was just talking to Mr. McQueen about that earlier today. It has. We are very fortunate. We identified, like I said before, individuals in the community who we're showing repeat recidivism when it comes to crimes, especially most violent crimes. And we partnered with ATF and US Marshal Service. We're able to get some of those folks out of the community, and we've had very, very few calls of violence down there. Shot, you know, we're getting routine shots, fires, people being shot. All that stuff has really decreased, so we're happy about that, too.
Several years ago, we formed a community watch out there. Do you feel like it's helped at all now?
It is, it's helped, it's active. And I haven't heard from them in a while, which is a good thing. Right? I hadn't heard from them in a while, so that's, I won't take that as a win.
That's a good, yeah, that's good.
Yeah, I reached out today to see if I can get their contact information, just follow up with them, see if they have seen a difference.
We've got some other neighborhoods that need a community watch.
Yeah, we do. But we're working on them, slowly but surely. I hope they answered your question.
Yes, sir. Any, any other comments? What, what?
I have a motion and a second.
Yes. I need a, all in favor of the parking ordinance?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed likewise. Next item of business, item number seven, water distribution presentation by Mr. Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are wanting to speak to these folks and the folks out in the community about the issues that we've been having at our water treatment plant. The water violations that we've been getting, that we've been sending out notices on, they are from a quarterly sample that we're having to do. We do four samples from four different sample sites every quarter. Matter of fact, we drew samples today. These samples- These samples, the issue with the results are, they are a average for four quarters. So as I'm going to show you on one of these slides, this one right here.
Robert, could I stop you real quick?
Yes.
I apologize. Could you define what the things we have that we're in violation of, what TTHMs and HAA? Can you just tell us what those are and why, what they're reading?
Where, where this generates from, TTHMs, total trihalamethanes and halocetic acid, they are a derivative of chlorine being added to the water to kill bacteria. The chlorine, there's a byproduct from the organics that's in the lake that the chlorine reacts to and creates these products.
Thank you.
One of the, one of the ways that they slowed this down back in the nineties was they stopped prechlorination. We used to prechlorinate. No, nobody does that, at least in the state of North Carolina anymore. But going back to this graph, this is for our TTHMs, starting with January of twenty. The, the orange dots represents the actual sample data. The line, the dotted line, is the average for the four quarters. Now, the four quarters, when you see that high, that first high one, Matt, I know you said, that first high one right here was January of last year. Well, everything prior to that, when you look at this high number, you have to look at this number, this number, and this number to get the average. So you're always looking back three samples prior to the, the one that you're on right now.
And you sample quarterly?
We sample quarterly.
So you're, you're actually looking back over a year?
Over a year, that's correct. So last year, when we had this high hit, it took one solid year to remove that high number.
Now, on, on the graph,
Uh huh.
the line represents the average, which is based on three previous quarterly samples. But the orange dots represent the actual measurement at that period in time.
The solid line, the solid black line is the MCL, the maximum contaminant limit.
So we were actually, according to this, only over three out of nine months. The rest of the time, we were below.
Correct.
So it's not an ongoing situation.
No, ma'am, it is not.
It's a sporadic thing that happened.
It happens generally, and, and this one that happened in January last year happened due to a failure of one of the clarifiers. We had to take it out of service. It took three months for the contractor. As y'all know, this time, we were dealing with COVID and everything else, trying to get them in, trying to get the parts that we needed. It took three months to put this back in service. When we took the first one out of service, it put the load on one instead of the load being spread to two. So as you can see, we had a high reading in January, but all of our subsequent for, for the year was below the MCL. But because of the averaging, we were in a violation state because the average put us over. This is, unfortunately, this is the way it's done, and that violation is for the highest site of the four sites that we sampled from.
Robert?
Yes.
Can I ask you, is, would there be any way to set up a, a graph to go monthly? It's every, a sample's every three months. It's on the average, but could it come back and be broken down into a, a monthly average?
No. And the reason is, this is all state. This is not my doing.
Right.
This is state of North Carolina EPA. They're the ones that require us to do quarterly samples. They're the ones that came up and said that this is done quarterly. Now, what I did do is during this time last year, I pulled additional samples that were not compliance samples. They were what we call special samples. All of those samples were well below MCL. But they're not reportable to the state. So those numbers let us know that we were doing the job we needed to do, but it doesn't help with the overall average.
And so the state dictates to the city how we do it on environment.
That's correct. Everything we do, everything we do is either state of North Carolina or it's EPA.
EPA.
And we, we can deviate, we can make things stricter, but we cannot make them any less lighter.
Right.
So.
So like the samples you pull?
Uh huh.
Could we report that?
No.
The way?
They would not, they would not accept those samples.
No, I'm not talking about reporting to the state. Could we report that to the citizens?
Yes.
That we did that. Because I think one of the things she was talking about was not knowing.
Yeah.
And, and that may be a situation where she would have known that. And I also want you to touch on the, the range.
Yes.
Like, from what levels acceptable from low to high, and then how far out was it?
Right.
You're talking about thousands.
Yeah, this,
It's not much.
This reading right here was somewhere around point one thirty-eight. And the MCL is at a point zero eight. So it was less than double what the MCL is. But as you can see, prior to that, like this one in January of twenty, we were at about a point thirty-eight. January normally is our low reading. That's why it shocked me when this one hit.
It was because of the clarifier.
Yep, the clarifier. Now, the readings that we're getting this year is due to when this happened to us last year. In fear of continuing to have hits, we chose not to treat our lake. That bit us this year because the algae took over at the water lake. We're already in the process of taking care of that. We're treating the lake, and it's not just here. I'm talking with other systems. The dry summer has caused a lot of algae problems throughout the state. So this is, unfortunately, this is what happens, especially with water systems that are on small lakes, ponds. You don't have as much algae issue with rivers because of the flowing water. But in ponds and, and lakes, you'll have algae.
Yes, standing water. Would it be any way to, about the algae, would there be any way that the city could combat the algae growth other than what we're doing, could be, other than when there's a problem, we, we react? Could we react before the problem?
And you really want to react before the problem?
Yeah.
Because as Ms. Abbey knows, back in the late eighties, early nineties, our taste and odor problems in this town were horrific. We would fill up a three hundred page notebook every summer from taste and odor complaints. The taste and odor complaints comes from the algae or the, pretty much the growth dying. When it dies off, it creates a bad odor.
I want to jump in here. It's not the only thing that causes taste and odor complaints, but it is, it is a significant driver.
Factor. It really is.
Variables that can cause that. Sometimes they're in other places in the system. Sometimes they're inside the home. The hot water heater is often a culprit. So we try to make sure that we address all those. I just don't want to give the false impression that's the only.
That, that is correct. And one of the things we use is copper sulfate, which basically is an oxygen depleter that helps stunt the growth of the algae. The other thing that we have done is we have grass carp that are in the lake, that it is time to purchase additional grass carp. They die off. They are sterile when we purchase them, but they help control the growth in the lake. So we are working toward all of this.
Can I say this? Some of the, some of the stuff you put into control to growth and stuff, that it give off odor, but it isn't dangerous.
That's correct.
The chemical comes off and it, and it does have an odor to it, but it isn't harmful to the citizens.
The, the copper sulfate that we use
That sulfate would be an odor.
Does not really produce an odor. I haven't, well, I've been in the water business for thirty-six years. My smell is different from y'all. And, and I never dispute somebody telling me what they smell. I just, I may not smell it the same as somebody else.
True.
So when I say I don't notice the smell from copper sulfate, that's me that's been in the business for so long that I don't see it. But that's not to say that there's not a smell.
But it would give off an odor.
Well, I wanted to add, with the application of copper sulfate, one thing that Robert and I have discussed is we're still in compliant with all of our other limits for
Correct.
water treatment, distribution, and, you know, the sampling that's required. So anytime we use a chemical like, or any, any chemical application to the water source, we're still going through the treatment process and we're still measured for compliance for many other factors. We're talking today about two factors that are measured quarterly. There are many other samples that we take and, and many other things that happen in our water system that we're measured against.
Yes.
And we're in compliance.
We're in compliance.
I think she's not here if she gets that information.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And it would leave a stain in the water. If the water stayed on the commode, if it gets in the sink, it would leave a stain.
One of the, the issues with, with these folks is they're on a dead end. Their house is the very last house on a line that there's very few folks on. Y'all agree? I have flushed the hydrant. That's what, four houses up from y'all? But the problem is, that does not alleviate their issue. One of the things I'm going to do is I'm going to talk to my distribution guy tomorrow and see if we can't go out and take a meter reading and flush at their house. Our system was built in nineteen hundred, and some of these areas, when, when it was built, they didn't ever think about putting blow-off points. So we're having to go back and retrofit some of this stuff. So some of these areas, like they've got on Stubbs Street, there was never a thought about, this is a dead end. This is going to create a problem later on. And unfortunately, these nice folks are having to deal with it.
What size line is that, Robert?
There's a six at the corner, what's, what's that other street? Manhattan, there's a, there's a six inch at the corner of Manhattan and Stubbs. What goes down to them, I'm not sure. But that's the line I need to flush. Flushing the, the hydrant helps prior to them, but it doesn't help what's already past that hydrant point. So I will talk with Robert and him tomorrow and see if I can get that. Yes, absolutely. Moving on, HAA's is the same situation with the THMs. Again, it's a quarterly average. So what happens, a high number happens one quarter. Depending on how high that number is, it may take an entire year to remove it. If it just barely kicks it over the next month, you may drop it back down. So unfortunately, the way they're, they do this with a quarterly average, we're stuck.
Well, I think it's important, too, for folks to realize that the situation corrects itself more quickly than it appears.
That is correct.
And the state sends that letter based on the average, not on the actual situation.
That's right.
So, I mean, the situation is cleared out.
And that was
They operate, too, the state's operating two months in arrears.
Yep.
So by virtue of the fact, you're not really getting current information when you get it.
Yes.
That's right.
And, and that's not taken up for me or, or my industry, but that's part of the problem. We had the hits last year in January, but I'm reporting in October of last year that we're still in violation, but yet our numbers
Are not.
were, were not in violation. As far as all the samples, all the subsequent sampling was well below limits. But because of this one that's extremely high, the average is the average.
Ordinarily.
Yeah, yeah. So.
And you see that trend continue on, this is, I mean, this is basically the same trend.
That's where I came from about the numbers on it. When you start playing the number game with the state,
Yep.
you're going, it's going to make us look bad.
And, and the other thing is, and me and Ms. Covenant talked about this, is we have to report it the way the state issues it.
Right.
They issued the letter to us. The only thing that we change in that letter is at the very bottom, I have to put when we were notified of the violation and when I sent it out to the public. The only other thing that I do to that is I try to explain what happened and what we're doing to rectify it. But I can't add my synopsis. I can't, there's certain things that if I change, then we're going to be in violation of not reporting the violation the way the state says you have to report it. So it's a catch twenty-two.
That's right.
I think, too, that they, the letter, which is not our letter, it's their letter.
That's correct.
Is inflammatory in a lot of respects because the
It is.
I mean, when your sample comes back into compliance in three months, they make it sound as though what you drank three months prior to that is going to kill you. You would have had to have drunk enough water to have drowned it for it to have affected your health.
If you, if you really do the research, it talks about drinking copious amounts of water for fifty to sixty years at that contaminant level. Well, we only had that contaminant level one sample of one quarter, one day. Because we sampled in February, we took special samples last year, and those numbers were already down below the MCL.
So you're talking about a thirty-day period?
Yes. But, you know, what this is, this is strictly a snapshot. It's not a video, and that's part of the problem. And like the, the test, the samples that we drew today, I won't have those results until the end of the month. That's the other. That's the other issue with some of this stuff. It takes so long on some of these results that, you know, we're sending out samples and I'm not finding out what those numbers are for anywhere from fifteen to forty-five days.
Wow.
So that's why I say it is strictly a snapshot of what you did for us, what we did today at twelve o'clock. Cause that's when we drew the samples. So I'm gonna move right along again. Basically, I've kind of gone over this, um, why and what is being done. The clarifier we took out of service, um, we put it back in in February. Uh, this was last year. Um, the high samples, the average, as I've explained. Um, spring of this year, the algae growth is what got us. Um, and it happened quicker than normal. Um, when I went out on the lake with the boat, it surprised me at how much growth we already had in the lake. In all the years I've been going to the lake, this was one of the fastest growing algies that I've seen. Um, so what we're doing now, um, as this says, we, we also took down one of these clarifiers and washed and inspected it, put it back online. And within the next few weeks, we're gonna take the second one down, wash it and inspect it. And what that does is it removes the algae that's growing in it. Um, so we'll get that done. One of the other things we did is, um, we hired a group to, uh, clean our clear wells this year. And again, I've been at the water treatment plant since nineteen eighty-six. That's the first time that that's ever been done. It's never been done. Um.
Will you explain what a clear well is and come to you?
The clear wells, we have two of them. Um, the clear wells are the finished product after filtration. They go into the clear wells. I can't tell you the names, they, where they came from, but they came long before I came around. But the clear well is the finished product after filtration. It is basically our storage tank at the treatment plant. So the water sits in the two clear wells until we pump it to the city. And when I say we pump it to the city, there's another misconception I'd like to straighten out now. Everybody thinks that they get their water from the water tanks. They do not. The only time they get water from the water tanks is if my pumps are cut off or if the demand is greater than what I'm pumping. Otherwise, they're getting the water straight from the plant, off of the system. There is no direct water line that feeds the water tank. The water tank is an overflow vessel. It's a storage and it's a pressure vessel. So the two at the plant are similar to what y'all see on Main Street, except one of them's in the ground fifteen foot and one of them's above the ground fifteen foot. This one up here is above the ground eighty-six feet to the bottom of it. So that's the difference in them. One's called a clear well, one's called an above ground storage.
Understood. Thank you.
Yep. Um, moving right along, and this was the part that the manager said he was maybe raining on my parade, but because of all this and because of the concerns of the citizens, we would like to have a meeting next Tuesday in the council chambers here. Um, we're gonna have two separate meetings that day. The first one, we're gonna start at two o'clock. We'll go to, till three o'clock. Um, now that's not to say that I won't stay longer. If there's more questions, if some people walk in a little bit before three o'clock, we're gonna be here to help them, to let them understand what's going on, let them ask the questions. And then we're gonna have a second meeting, uh, that night from six to seven. And again, we're gonna be going over the same thing. Um, one meeting's not, it's not planned to be any different than the first one, but we may learn from the first one and add some stuff to the second one. Um, but we do encourage our citizens to come to this if they have questions about the water. Um, I do apologize for these letters that, that y'all are receiving. Um, I want to go ahead and publicly apologize because you're gonna get one next month. Because of the samples we did today, because of the average, we're gonna be out of compliance. Not necessarily out of compliance for the samples we drew today, but we're gonna be out of compliance for the samples we've already drawn. And unfortunately, that's the nature of the beast.
Well, I think that's an absolutely for the public house next Tuesday. That's a wonderful idea and plan. And I don't think you owe the citizens a hand, so we accept apology, but you don't owe, you're working. And it's, this is self-explanatory. And if they'd like to come and learn more and be, and become educated about it, thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Could you consider having another meeting like at a different time? It's just a week away.
Yeah. We can have, we can have many, you know, this is the start.
And possibly open that up, maybe Zoom or something like that.
Yeah, totally. Yeah. We just wanted to, we wanted to do something, right? And we wanted to take a step in the right direction because we get, Robert and I get these calls all the time.
Yep.
And, and information, as you've pointed out a couple of times, you know, along, leading up to this, is like if you had this information, you know, it, when you don't know, it's, it's only natural. You know, I think we need, we have a duty to provide that information and this is a start for us. We can, we hope to grow it and we hope that people are interested in it. Um, I think that, you know, as Robert suggested, you know, the data, you see those high points at the end there? We're, our average is gonna jump up and probably for a little while, we're gonna get violations even if we fix the problem. We've also, at the last meeting, we applied for a grant for roughly a little more than ten million dollars to help address some things at the plant and some things in the system. Um, and finally, you know, this is the tip of the iceberg. So if people are interested, if we wanna maybe do it another month from now, you know, or, or do it online or record it, you know, we'll do anything we can to get the word out.
Quick turnaround between now and next week.
Yeah.
It is. And we did this, Jesse, uh, it's something that me and the manager's been working on because Abby asked a while back, could we, could we put something else out? Because we've addressed what the state says we had to do, but it scared the heck out of people. It scared me. Um, and just to give you just a tidbit of information, last year, I had to explain what I've just explained to y'all to the lady that's calling me from the state wanting to know when we're gonna fix the problem. This was in, this was after our July sampling. And she's like, you're still in compliance, out of compliance. When are you gonna get back in compliance? And I had to explain to her, we're in compliance with our sampling. All of our sampling since January have been well under the MCL. We're in compliance. We've done everything we said we were gonna do to get our numbers down. But until we remove that high number, we're gonna be out of compliance. And I'm talking to her over the phone as I'm driving to go pick up my grandkids and she, she couldn't get it. And I said, it's an average. I said, if you've got four quarters.
Maybe if they would report the data as actual data instead of an average.
Yes.
People would have a better snapshot of what's really going on.
Well, that's what I meant by I'll come on a monthly.
Yeah.
Data, actual data on it.
And, and that's, you know, when I got through talking with her, she told me, she said, I understand more about this now than I ever have. And I'm thinking, this is the one that holds me accountable.
But she's the one who called you and she didn't really know what she was.
Yeah. She's the one, she was asking. Sending me the violation. So. But if y'all have any more questions, I'll answer them. If not, I wouldn't mind some of y'all coming next week. Um, if you can, um, please, because the more we can get here, the more we can get it out to where people do understand what's going on and what we are doing. The other thing that, that I'm doing, um, is I'm gonna have our new water plant superintendent here for both of these meetings next week. So if y'all haven't met him, I would like to introduce you to him. Um, he's gotten thrown to the wolves, um, but he's picking it up and he's doing a good job. So.
The only thing about that, if, if that be the case, we'd have to stay below the, the threshold of a meeting or either advertise a meeting.
I, I'd maybe, I kind of have an interpretation that I'm, I'm not sure what the attorney would say, but that as long as we're not conducting business, I don't know that it's a public workshop as long as there's no.
That would, to me, that would be the.
Do you, do you know where I'm going with this? Is that a, I mean, it's kind of in the weeds, but do you, is there a, if, if we were to have a. I mean, I don't know. I hate to put you on the spot.
I wouldn't feel comfortable doing it.
You, you could advertise a special meeting or you could go to the meeting as participants and not discuss town business or take any final action on town business.
Just as interested citizens.
Interested citizen.
Yeah. I'd rather, if we're gonna do it, I'd rather just call a meeting.
We can. I mean, we only have to do it. We can meet those requirements easily.
Yeah. I'd just like to meet the requirements.
Yeah.
I just, I think that's.
Well, Robert, I thank you for the presentation. And I thank you for being man enough and manning up to the concerns and has taken a, taken a stand as the superintendent. I appreciate you manning up and being honest with us.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Do you have any more questions, Ms. Drake?
Okay, council, did you have something else?
I, I did. I read here on the report on page one and it says to educate, in an effort to educate the public on this critical issues of water and open house meeting, the two me, two meetings a day. And so I think that comes up on, uh, on education, would that create a problem? Have an educational meeting for the citizens of Hamlet to come in and talk, as Robert would say, on the eighteenth and the, on the eighteenth or anytime. That's not a, that's not a guest at law, is it?
No, that's, that's what we're gonna do and we're also available outside of those times. If, if we're just, we wanted to get something started, so we put this on the calendar and we're announcing it tonight. Um, we hope that people come out and of course we'll promote it. Um, and if people can't make it or we can do additional meetings, um, we'll, staff will make time to meet with citizens always.
I appreciate your efforts on this. Thank you. Good thinking.
Good thinking.
Uh, council, next item is item number eight. The next meeting, regular meeting date is scheduled for, uh, voting day, uh, which is November the eighth, and we would like to discuss changing that date until November the ninth at six P M., which will be a Wednesday rather than a Tuesday. Were your wishes, council?
Make a motion to change the meeting night from Tuesday to Wednesday.
And that's just for one month on?
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, just for that one, one month.
I make a motion, we'll change it.
Is that your second, sir? We had a motion.
Oh, second. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion in a second. All in favor of changing the next meeting until Wednesday, the ninth of November? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise.
Same time, right?
Yep, six o'clock.
Same time.
Okay, moving along, item number nine, uh, city manager's report.
Yes, thank you, mayor. I'll announce several public events we've got going on in October. Um, we're, uh, have a couple more food trucks on October the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth. Uh, we are gonna have yoga at the park on October the twentieth. Um, on October the twenty-third, uh, the final, um, installation of the, the boxcar concert series will conclude with All American Jazz Band from three to five. Of course, we'll have our, uh, Marquis Seaboard Festival at the end of the month, on the last Saturday in October. And on, um, Halloween, October thirty-first, a new event this year will be the Boo Bash, which will be essentially a truck or treat event on Main Street from, uh, five thirty to eight. Um, so those, those are the events we have coming up this month and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And what was the, the Boo Bash? It's on the thirty-first?
It's on the thirty-first.
On what time?
Five thirty to eight.
Who's doing that?
Would you also like to mention?
Partnership with the downtown businesses and, and the depot.
Would you also like to mention that the fair is in town this week?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, mayor. Uh, the, I didn't want to steal your thunder, actually. But the fair.
Thursday to Sunday.
Richmond County Agricultural Fair begins this week on Thursday and goes through Sunday.
And let's hope it doesn't rain.
Is Boo Bash Main Street, Hamlet Avenue or both?
Main Street.
And.
There's additional details if, um, if you want to look back in, uh, Michelle's report. Uh, there's a bullet that has her events and these are all included.
Is that, is that all you got, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Start on, uh, comments and counsel, Mr. Martin.
I don't have anything at this time.
Yeah, Mr. Sellers.
Well, I think, I'd like to thank all the people that came out and showed their concerns and like to also, uh, tell them that anytime they have any concerns, we've got a very open door city manager, city clerk, mayor and council that will address and, and all the concerns that are brought before us. And I'd like to thank Robert Brown for your fine, fine representation and encouraged the citizens of Hamlet to come out to these meetings next, uh, on the eighteenth and come here and talk and understanding, educate yourself about it. I also like to, uh, we got a fair coming up starting Thursday. People that like to come to fair, still old or young, come out and enjoy our fair. And a Seaboard Festival that starts, comes back on the twenty-ninth, come there and to support us, uh, and there's gonna be a, the Masonic Lodge will be having a breakfast open for all the people to come and enjoy a fine breakfast and then walk the streets and get all the vendors and gain a few pounds on the way down, up and down and maybe walk them off. But thank you, and that concludes my report.
Mr. Stewart.
Um, as always, ready to see faces, love the citizens of Hamlet. Please keep coming out to the meetings. Um, early voting starts October twentieth. Please go early voting. You don't make early voting, um, voting day is November eighth. So we want to make sure that all the citizens are out and voting. And I want to also announce, um, October twenty-fifth, we'll be meeting with the citizens of the South Hamlet community in their, uh, office, right downtown, right in the South Hamlet community across from the park to talk to the community about the park, um, see something, say something. Um, anything that we can take notes and talk to that community about to make sure that, um, you know, we embrace that, that living situation in that space in our South Hamlet community. We want every community in, in the city of Hamlet to be, um, where you lay down and you don't have a problem whatsoever. That's our total goal. But most of all, the park for the kids, we want to make sure that we are protecting that and I'm just hoping and praying that citizens will come out and talk to us about that.
And the time on that.
The twenty-fifth at six o'clock.
Six P M.
Yes.
This month?
This month. Yes.
Okay, thank you. What else you got?
That's it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Covington?
Um, well, I think everybody's about covered all of our current events, but, um, and we've got several, we've had several ribbon cuttings in town and celebrated the opening of a new coffee shop and, um, some things up at Joe's Florist. And I think as I've gone around and yesterday they had a ribbon cutting in Ellerby. They've got one this Friday for another business. This was Max's Millstone Barbecue. He's gonna add to our food truck array when they comes down and we sampled it and I, it's worth the trip. So, but, um, I just think it's encouraging to me to. to see all of the activities that are scheduled for October. October's a busy month with the Seaboard Festival and the fair and, um, all the other things that are going on on the side, and the concerts we have down at the depot are excellent. Those are, I was at the last one. You really miss a treat if you don't protect, take. And, um, I encourage everybody to kind of stay informed, stay on our website, find out what's going on, be a part of it, and, you know, watch, the people who put these on appreciate your attendance. It kind of feeds them. And I want to thank Robert for the presentation. You know, I've heard a lot of chatter about the water situation. I drink the water, and I can't think of anybody I'd rather have in charge of my water than Robert Brown. He drinks the same water that I do, so, and I feel, you know, safe in that regard. So I hope this has made people feel better, and if they're, you know, have some concerns and want to be educated, they need to be here next week.
Good. Thank you. Ms. McQueen?
Um, Seaboard Festival, um, also considered thinking about for paper can, uh, put this in there, but people volunteering to be on the Seaboard Committee. That entire group is probably less than six, six or seven core people, and they work all year from probably March through the actual day of the event. And it would be really good for those folks to have some extra folks helping them, um, doing that. Uh, as Ms. Covington said, there's been several places that's opened in Hamlet. We've got, um, different, different businesses, some coffee shops, some restaurants. I mean, everybody always says they want something, but nobody wants to to make it happen. And not only do they not want to make it happen, they don't even spend money in them a lot of times. We need to support these places or quite frankly, quit saying you want something to come if you're not at least gonna support it. Touch on what, uh, my friend Maurice said, election's coming up. Um, some very important issues, um, that by default are on the bout. Um, just whenever you cast your vote, just keep in mind who caused the city taxes to go up ten, ten cents on the, on the dollar, on the, um, on the ad voiding tax rate. And keep in mind some of the towns in this county that may not be in existence in a couple of years. If it were not for COVID money that the government gave us, we wouldn't be able to fund some of the things we did. And we would also, um, be in a, a world, a world of trouble. Um, so when you go in there and circle in that dot, just think about who did that and 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 think about making a choice of, um, new, new leadership. I'll just go ahead and say it. Um, but other than that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. McQueen. Well, as I said, everybody's covered about everything. Uh, did have opportunity, like I say, to go to some of these grand openings. Uh, one of them was at the Food Line in Hamlet. They've got a drive-through now. You can call and make your order, and they'll bring it out to your car when you drive up there. So that's, uh, that's something new for us. We, um, the fair this year is gonna be great. Uh, hopefully, it won't rain too much. I mean, you gotta have a little rain with every fair. And, uh, but, uh, the barn is full. We have got, in fact, it, we've got so many. I I looked over there today, and there's a guinea out running around the field by itself, so I don't know when they'll ever catch it.
Never.
Had a billy goat bust out of the pen last night, had to get him back in. But, uh, it seems like every year when we have a billy goat, we have that problem down there. But, uh, it is, we've got a lot of artistic stuff that's been brought in down there that you might like to look at. And, uh, great ride groups, so we'll, like I say, it'll start on Thursday, and it will run through Sunday. They will be open for the rides on Sunday, and, uh, so.
In Thursday, isn't Thursday the student day?
Yeah.
Anybody that's a student K through twelve gets in free if if you don't, if it doesn't rain.
It's also, uh, yeah, it's also Senior Citizen Day. So if you're a senior citizen, you're welcome to come in for free down there on Thursday. Uh, Shazzy Gifts is opening next week. I don't know how many of you are familiar with it yet. It's in the old Joe Brown building down there across from R C C campus. They fixed it up real nice, and, uh, they're gonna have a grand opening on the seventeenth. So I am just so pleased to see what's going on in Hamlet with our buildings. Uh, there's so many nice little stores down the street here, and, you know, there's the opportunity to get down, walk down there and look at some of the stuff, so we're, you know, we're making progress. And, uh, I just can't say enough, it's it's great to see it. I've had some feelings put out to me. Uh, there's some people that are, again, are interested in trying to do something with the Opera House, so I'm waiting to see what comes of that. Uh, I've had, I've had one call from out of town and several from here in, uh, Richmond County that are interested. So maybe we'll get something going on that, so that would be great. But I hope everybody has a really nice Halloween, comes downtown for the, uh, Boo Bash. Again, at the fair now, we're gonna have something new this year. We're gonna have the food trucks at the fair this year also. So, uh, please come down and visit the food trucks. Uh, so we're doing, trying to do some nice, some different things. It's been two years since we had a fair, and we're just glad to have it. And, uh, everybody have a great, again, have a great Halloween and, uh, stay safe. And, uh, with that, uh, if there's nothing further, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Got a motion and a second from Ms. Abby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise.
What time is Shazzy Gifts?